Good afternoon, everyone. It's 1:00, or actually 1:02, and it's time to call the order. The Thursday, June 7th meeting of the Rancho Mirage City Council. Also included in the meeting is the Library and Observatory Board, Housing Authority Board, and the City Council representing the Redevelopment Successor Agency. So at this time, I'd like to call on our former mayor, Charles Townsend, who will lead us in the flag salute.
Thank you, Richard. My pleasure. Pleasure having your heart speed up to me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Kristi, could we roll call, please?
Certainly. Councilmember Hobart. Councilmember Hobart, are you here? Councilmember Townsend?
Yes.
Councilmember Wild?
Here.
Mayor Protem Smotrich?
Here.
And Mayor Kite?
Here, thank you. And today, we're going to start off with a presentation, and the topic is Map Your Neighborhood. And Mary Lou Suter, the Vice President of the Communities, or the Community Association, Emergency Preparedness Commission, will be the speaker. Mary Lou, it's good to see you today.
Greetings to all of you, to our City Council members, and to our staff members, and to our ladies and gentlemen. We're glad to be here to talk about Map Your Neighborhood. The information we're going to share with you today, Map Your Neighborhood, is a program that's really important because in a disaster, and we're talking about disaster here, the most important source of help that you'll have will come from your neighbors. So may I introduce Marcia Stein, the Chair of the Rancho Mirage Emergency Preparedness Commission. And Marcia and I will be talking about the Map Your Neighborhood program. And also, I'd like to express our gratitude to Mayor Protem Iris Smotrich, who's worked hand in hand with us on the commission. Thank you, Iris.
It's great to be here, and I think this is an incredible program. We've been working on, with all the HOAs, on Map Your Neighborhood for about five years. The program was developed in Washington State by Luann Johnson, who has a PhD, and is now being used in 43 states, and they're so generous to share it with us. So neighbors who are prepared for emergencies and disaster situations save lives, reduce the severity of injuries and trauma, and reduce property damage. This afternoon, we're going to show you how easy it is to train residents in this program by using a video DVD, together with a booklet, that each resident keeps. And you all see the booklet up there. I know the City Council each has a copy, and those are available at City Hall.
Windstorms, fires, terrorist attacks, disasters can strike at any time. When they do, 911 emergency responders such as fire, police, medical, and utility personnel may be overwhelmed with calls. They may not be able to respond for hours, or days. How will you and your family survive a serious event like a disaster? What if the key to your survival isn't just what you know, but what your neighbors know, and how well you might be able to work together? Hi, I'm Grant Goody, and today, we're going to talk about neighborhood disaster preparedness. Many years ago, we seemed to be able to get to know our neighbors so much better than we do now. But with today's busy lifestyle, you're lucky to get to know your next-door neighbor's first name, let alone anything else about them. Today, you're going to intentionally meet your neighbors and get to know them. And you'll also discover how their particular skill sets may help you and your family in a time of disaster. Together, you will learn how to work as a team to help each other, when no one else will be able to. In this meeting, you'll learn the nine steps to take immediately following a disaster. You'll identify the skills and equipment each neighbor has that will be useful in a disaster response. You'll create a map of your neighborhood, showing the locations of gas and propane meters. And you'll complete a contact list that will identify each neighbor who may need extra help following a disaster, such as the elderly, neighbors with disabilities, or children home alone. So grab a pen or pencil and a Map Your Neighborhood booklet, and let's begin.
So that shows you a little bit about Map Your Neighborhood. The video itself is very easy to use, and as you can see, it's a simple nine-step process. It starts at home, and then it reaches throughout your neighborhood. The program is designed to improve emergency readiness in neighborhoods, and it can be modified for rural areas, condos, and even apartment complexes. We've used it here in Rancho Mirage to also work with the mobile home parks. By working together as, in a team setting, people do get to know each other. They learn what skills and equipment each person has, and whether any neighbors have special needs, and then they develop a stronger sense, and a sense of belonging in the community.
About 70% of all survivors in disasters are rescued and assisted by other survivors. It's really important to know that. At times like this, it may take seven to 10 days or more before fire, medical, police, and other first responders to arrive to help. We use this program because it has a proven track record with neighbors responding in a timely and organized manner to the needs of their neighbors.
So if any Rancho Mirage residents would like to learn more about Map Your Neighborhood, please view the Rancho Mirage website, especially ranchomaragepreparedness.org, or call Britt Wilson at the city. He's our emergency services coordinator, and the number there is 760-324-4511. And if anyone has questions, we would be glad to answer them at this time, and we're very thankful for this opportunity to present Map Your Neighborhood to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Lou. Thank you, Marcia. Any questions? Okay, thanks for being here today. Okay, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the non-agenda public comments. This gives you all an opportunity to come forward and speak on any item that is not included in today's agenda. And I don't think we have any cards turned in, do we?
No, Mayor, we do not.
Okay. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak that has not filled out a card to speak? Okay, thank you very much. We'll now move on to City Council and Board Member comments, and I'll start from my right. Ted, do you have a comment today?
I do. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. On Friday, May 11th, the Tolerance Education Center held an event honoring Holocaust survivor Rose Peppin. I was afforded the opportunity to say a few words on behalf of the city during the ceremony. Rose was presented with a proclamation from County Supervisor Manny Perez, who I am, by the way, happy to announce was elected supervisor this past Tuesday. Pictured above are Assemblymember Eduardo Garcia, County Supervisor Manny Perez, Honoree Rose Peppin, and Tolerance Education Center staff, staff who helped organize the event. Also participating was Mayor Protem Smotrich. The grand demonstration of courage and perseverance by Rose is not one to be forgotten. Rose was born in Minsk, Belarus; the exact date is unknown. She had an older brother who died of pneumonia and lack of food at the age of two. One day, upon returning home from work, her father was stopped by a Nazi soldier, ordered to kneel, and shot in the back of his head. Her mother was advised to leave Minsk immediately. She fled to Siberia with Rose and only one suitcase. They resided there until 1945. After the war ended, they returned to Poland, only to discover that all of their family was murdered, and their town was destroyed. They moved to a displaced persons camp where her mother married another Holocaust survivor who lost his wife and two children at an extermination camp. On U.S. Independence Day in 1949, Rose and her parents arrived in Michigan to begin a new chapter of their lives. Rose possesses a BS degree in education and a Master of Science degree in administration. She has a brother, and sister, and two children, two stepchildren, and five grandchildren. Rose speaks regularly to students at the Tolerance Education Center in Rancho Mirage. I might say that we, as electeds, have the opportunity to present proclamations to various people. Rose was one of the most extraordinary people I have ever met. Her theme to her students are not to do as well as you can, but to excel. And she instills in them a higher degree of accomplishment, and you can feel that in talking to her and listening to her. And I can truly say, as a result of the proclamation that I presented to Rose, that I too am a better person, and Rose, if you're viewing this at some point, truly, I want to say thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ted, for the very moving presentation. Iris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, I have two presentations. And good afternoon, everyone. On Monday, May 28th, the nation once again observed Memorial Day. To most people, it was just a day off from work, or a time for picnics and barbecues, or a vacation weekend. But to a large portion of our country, it was a day to honor our fallen soldiers. It was a day to remember and pay tribute to the thousands of men and women who so valiantly made the ultimate sacrifice. For the freedoms we enjoy today, they are to be thanked. So on this very special day, Mayor Richard Kite and I were able to attend the Cemetery District's annual Memorial Day remembrance at the very beautiful Desert Memorial Park and Cemetery. It was a very solemn and moving program that was emceed by our own Steve Quintanilla, who, as many of you know, also serves as the attorney for the Palm Springs Cemetery District. The Palm Springs High School band played the National Anthem and patriotic music, such as the Medley of Service and the Heartbreaking Taps. There was also an incredible singer named Keisha D., who sang a very touching rendition of "God Bless America" and "America the Beautiful." The America Legion Post 519 presented the colors and the Honor Guard salute, and Rabbi Sally Olin delivered the invocation and benediction. And a very heartfelt Memorial Day address was given by Major Devon Jewell, from the 29 Palms Marine Base. Needless to say, the entire program was incredibly beautiful, meaningful, and most touching. Stories were told about the combined grief and pride of those returning from battle, stories of terrifying but defining moments on the battlefields of bloodshed, and incredible examples of bravery, courage, and valor at all costs. There were stories of all who died in defense of their country, not because they wanted to die, but because they wanted to live for their country and all its glory. It was a day when great respect was paid to all, all of America's fallen heroes. And as always, one of the most touching parts of the ceremony was the playing of the theme songs for each branch of the military. Seeing these veterans of every age standing so proudly at attention when their own song was played brought many tears to many eyes. In addition, Mayor Kite, Councilmember Townsend, and I had the privilege of dedicating and presenting American flags for the fallen soldiers in our own lives. Mayor Kite honored the memory of the fallen, the father of Steve Q.'s godsons Dale Edward Gencha, who was a sergeant during the Vietnam War. Councilmember Townsend dedicated a flag to his late partner, former Rancho Mirage Council Member and Mayor Gordon Muller. And I was honored to dedicate and present a flag for Captain Ronald Michael Meyercheck, a soldier whose name was imprinted on a metal bracelet I wore for almost three years in the early 1970s. Captain Meyercheck was a pilot in the U.S. Air Force, who on November 24th, 1967, became an MIA soldier, meaning he was missing in action. His plane went down in the jungles of Vietnam, and sadly, his remains have never been recovered, meaning that his loved ones still may not have any closure to their great loss. Jason, will you please run the slideshow?
Memorial Day is observed by millions of Americans as a day to express their feelings, pride, respect, and honor, for those who gave their all, so that we can all live together in a kind, civil, and gentle America. Many of these brave men and women, whether they were black, white, brown, and whether they were American-born or immigrants, all bled red, white, and blue, and gave the ultimate sacrifice for liberty. The greatest respect one can show them is to recognize that although you do not know them, you do know that they served our country with courage and dignity, and that their lives were not lost in vain, but in protecting liberty for people like you and me.
So, as we all know, freedom is never free, and the recognition of all our service people is so vital. So perhaps, when you next see someone in a military uniform, please do yourself a favor, and do them a great honor. Extend to them a personal thank you, and maybe tell them how grateful we all are for their dedicated service, and for the freedoms they continue to give us. And maybe next Memorial Day, you can just stop for a moment and take a few moments out of your day to remember the brave men and women who made the ultimate sacrifice so that we all might live free. Thank you. And now, we have someone special who's going to come up and speak about another subject. And this is Sheila Thornton, Thornton. And she is the CEO of One Future, CV. This is a nonprofit organization that helps local students, and I will let Sheila tell us more about the work they do. Thank you, and welcome.
Thank you very much. I'm Mayor Protem Smotrich, Mayor Kite, and the entire City Council for this opportunity. We are very grateful to share our mission. It's an honor to be working on this mission. I'm going to just comment that I'm blessed to see that memorial around the veterans. My dad is 102, I was telling Mayor Protem Smotrich, and he is a World War II veteran. And so, what I, I'm the youngest of nine kids. What I got out of it was how to make a tight bed. He taught us how to make our bed well, and the value of doing that every day. So I'm here to introduce you to One Future Coachella Valley. I'm here also with our wonderful team, two of our board members, Pete Del Rio, who is our Board Chair, and Tom Davis, who is our Treasurer. Judy Olivas is our Director of Development. While our name is new, and our nonprofit is new, we were launched March 1st, 2017. Our work is 13 years old, and we are now known, and often not known in the Coachella Valley, but known across the state and nation as a national, as a best practice for how communities can improve overall educational attainment, as a driver of a pathway out of poverty for students, and also as a driver of workforce quality. So we started under CVEP, Coachella Valley Economic Partnership, in 2005, with the focus on education as economic development, and a very specific focus on thinking regionally about how we prepare our kids for the future workforce. And I know I have a PowerPoint presentation coming up that I can track with. There you go. Our mission, as I said, is the same. We want to assure every student is ready for college, career, and life. We know, we have a broad definition of college. Every child needs to have aptitude for some work, certificate, credential, or degree after high school, if they're going to be able to make a meaningful wage and contribute their gifts to the future of our community. And, at the same time, it's a parallel goal, make sure that the employers in this region have the kind of workforce they need. And we're seeing some great results from that. We follow the national data that shows that we need 65% of Americans to have a high-quality degree, or credential, or certificate. In our region, only 30% of adults have an AA degree or higher, but among adult Hispanics, which is our largest growing population, 11%. So our kids in this region, who are going to be our future workforce, they'll work at Eisenhower, they will be in city government, they will work as attorneys and business owners. Many of them are coming from families where there is not an education past high school. That's a big challenge, and we have to solve that. And the good news is, we've got a model to do it. We also focus on employment backwards, thinking about the sectors that hold promise for our kids, to be sure that we are aligned with that. The top jobs in this region require a degree, and if our kids aren't prepared for college, and if they aren't getting to college, and don't have the financial path, they will not be prepared for the future workforce. We'll keep bringing them in from outside. We also are competing nationally and statewide for the same talent, and so our region, knowing that we're going to be 4,000 doctors, primary care doctors, undersupplied by 2030, our region needs to be very attentive to the fact that we're not going to be competing with LA, or San Francisco, or others, that we are, we need to grow our own here in the valley. That was the intent behind what we now run, that One Future Coachella Valley, that is the regional plan for college and career success. It's a master plan for the region, to be sure we have an educated workforce, and that more students are going to college, finishing college, and getting the jobs in this region. All three school districts are on this plan, as are our four key college partners. County Office of Ed, County EDA, and hundreds of business partners have been working at this. The results of the plan have been phenomenal. Since 2005, we've increased the number of students, region-wide, across 13 high schools, studying in career academies, that are preparing them for careers and for college, like the Rancho Mirage academies, from five to 47 pathways. Career academies are pathways. 600 students in 2005, now 6,500 students are preparing for college and career. That's a huge move, and it's a result of the regional collaborative. One Future's role in that is to drive this master planning. That's our work. Career academies make a big difference in this region, and if you've been exposed to any student in one of those, you would see what a difference they are in terms of preparedness for the workforce. We were blessed by a foundation who came in in 2009 to give a million dollars a year in scholarships for 10 years. We matched that million dollars a year with 15 nonprofits, and aligned requirements, so that we are really sort of training our entire community to think about college success and the financial path together, and commit to our students for the future, and we've awarded $13 million in scholarships since 2009. We've moved the financial aid capture for students up in that time, and have placed, this year it will be 150 juniors and seniors in college in local healthcare sites, including Eisenhower Medical Center, Desert Regional, JFK. And these are our future doctors, nurses, public health professionals. We don't want to do the brain drain. We want to bring them back, and we want them to know these employers, and be very engaged, and be able to be hired here in the future. So the pipeline is working. Just based on degree attainment and the differential between a high school diploma and a bachelor's degree in this area, we calculate that for 2,000 students who have gotten scholarships in our pipeline, the impact on the economy is $42 million in wages. And that is not just our statistic. We are, that's something that people well know across the country, and are focused on improving. Our kids are getting jobs. Two of 10 staff members came up through our pipeline. They received scholarships or internships, and we now find them at hospitals, the City of India, actually, we have them at Jewish Family Services. Students are here, they're coming back, and the pipeline is working. And in the city of Rancho Mirage, you have exposure to these students through the academies. A number of students have received scholarships from us as well, and they've participated in our internship program. So we just wanted to share these phenomenal results with you, and invite you to learn more about One Future Coachella Valley, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for being here today. Any questions?
Well, you certainly did move forward since we had our first meeting with you guys. You really stepped up. Wonderful. Congratulations. You're very dedicated to it, and I'm very proud to see that it's come, to do exactly what you told me was going to do.
Thank you. And I want to just say thank you also on behalf of our board for your contribution to our upcoming Student Leadership Conference, which is at Eisenhower's Annenberg Health Sciences Center, where 250 students will launch their college career. So thank you from the bottom of our hearts for your generosity and support for our students.
Okay, thanks for being here today. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Dana, do you have any comments today?
Not today, thank you.
Okay. Charles?
Yes, I do have a comment about something that's going to be happening very shortly. We are going to be having a presentation on the observatory, and we're going to have a presentation on the library. Aaron McLaughlin, our astronomer, will be here, along with Aaron Espinoza, and they're going to be talking about the campus, that it's evolving into, and what it's evolving into today. They also have in their presentation a beautiful film that was done by Carol Liebowitz's husband. And I wanted them to make sure they used it in there, and they are going to do that, so you will see that. So later on, you will see the latest, greatest presentation, and what is happening at the library, and what is happening at the observatory. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. And finally, I just have an announcement that I'm really excited about. This is the grand opening of the Dell Webb Rancho Mirage Sales Office and 10 model homes. The 320-acre residential community is located directly across from the Western Mission Hills Golf and Resorts and Spa, and has already sold 60 homes without one person stepping inside the beautiful model homes. A strong increase in sales is expected, as potential buyers can visually experience what their future home can be. Upon completion of over 1,000 homes, we'll be adding this to the great northern area of our city. The grand opening will be at 10:00 a.m. this Saturday, that's June 9th, so we hope that you're all there. It should be an exciting opening, and Rancho Mirage is really It should be an exciting opening, and Rancho Mirage is really looking forward to working with everybody at Dell Webb and make this one of the great developments in the area. So, that again is this Saturday at 10:00 AM, and they're across from the Weston Hotel. Okay, with that, that pretty much wraps up the comments, and now we'll need approval of the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
There's a motion in a second to approve the minutes. Would you please vote?
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, thank you. And now, we'll move on to the consent calendar, and it gives me pleasure to introduce our new city manager, who's been with the city for a number of years, but has now taken on the role as city manager, Isaiah Hagerman. Welcome, Isaiah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I start summarizing the consent calendar, I wanted to highlight a few items that have happened recently. So, Mayor, it's been a busy start for you. This is your fifth time serving as mayor to the City of Rancho Mirage, and you've had some big events, and today is one. But before we get to today, Jason, can we bring up the photo, please? We all wanted to congratulate you and your beautiful bride Becky on your recent wedding, and it was a fabulous event. So, congratulations to both of you.
Thank you.
Today is also a special day because, Mr. Mayor, it's your birthday.
Yay!
So, we got you a little something. So, here you go.
This is a ballot box?
Yes.
Okay. Just what you needed. How'd you know what I needed?
Go ahead, put it on. It's your birthday hat.
Okay, I think that's pretty classy.
Perfect. So, from all of us here, we just wanted to wish you a very happy birthday, and what better way to celebrate a birthday than a city council meeting? So, happy birthday, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Thank you to all the council. I'm sure everybody had a chance to try the hat on before I got it, so, thank you very much. Appreciate it. And thank you all for coming today.
Let me say this before our city manager continues, that for a long time, maybe a year, there's always been the threat that if we don't approve the consent calendar, we stand the risk of the, at that point, the assistant city manager reading the entire consent calendar. Well, that's no longer a threat, because that individual is now in full bloom as the city manager, and indeed, he's going to read it. So, we're delighted that you're here and you can do that. Thanks.
And it's now official, yes. Okay.
All right. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, there are seven items on your consent calendar today. Item number one is the waiver of the full reading of all ordinances introduced or adopted pursuant to today's agenda. Item number two is the appointment of Donna Malouf to serve on the Community Cultural Commission, and Mike Renner to serve on the Mobile Home Fair Practices Commission. Item number three is the final acceptance of three projects, two at Rancho Palms Mobile Home Park, and one cabinetry project at Parkview Villas. Item number four on the consent calendar is an extension of the completion date for Parcel Map 36913. Jason, why don't we go ahead and bring up that map? Parcel Map 36913 is a one-lot, 16-office space condominium map located just behind the Rancho Las Palmas Shopping Center. The developer is in the final stages of project completion. However, there is still some onsite work to be completed, and the developer has requested an extension of the required completion date to April 7th, 2019. So, staff is recommending approval of that time extension. Thank you, Jason. Staff is requesting that item number five be pulled and presented separately. Item number six are contracts. There are one, there is one contract on the contracts list, and that is for a comprehensive upgrade of our records retention system. And item number seven are demands, and staff is here to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there any question from the council? No questions? Is there anybody in the audience who have a question regarding the consent items? Okay, can I have a motion for approval of holding back item number five? So moved. Motion in a second? All in favor, vote yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Motion carries. Okay, would you like to discuss item five?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, this project is the award of contract for ADA enhancements to 54 of our curb access ramps that are adjacent to Highway 111 and Bob Hope Drive. This is a fantastic project for the city. It's being partially funded with grant funds, and this helps the city document its, and its ADA transition plan to show our efforts towards ADA compliance. The construction contract to LC paving and sealing in the amount of $668,224 was the lowest responsive bid. Staff is requesting to modify the recommendation that's in the staff report to just the approval of the construction contract to LC paving and sealing for $668,224, and to return the professional services agreement back to staff for additional review. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions on this item?
No.
Anybody in the audience have a question? Okay, can we have...
I'll move passage with the modifications.
Pardon me?
I'll move that we approve the passage of the item, consistent with the modifications that have been suggested by our city manager.
Okay, there's a motion to approve the, with the modifications. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Second, please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much. Now, move on to item number eight, which is an observatory update by Erin McLaughlin, our astronomer, and Erin Espinoza, our library director. So, Erin?
Good afternoon. I do apologize, but Erin McLaughlin is under the weather today, so I will be giving the presentation today. So, good afternoon, Mayor Kite, City Council, Mr. Hagerman, and city staff. Today, we mark the 74th day since the grand opening of the Rancho Mirage Observatory. Since our opening, the response from the community has been overwhelmingly positive. To date, we have given observatory tours to 1,500 attendees. We have had over 700 attendees at our stargazing parties, and had over 600 at our astronomy programs. For the month of June, we scheduled 10 stargazing parties, thus, that was 500 spots for registration. Those 500 spots filled in less than four and a half hours. The observatory has garnered local and national recognition, recently being named MSN.com's "The Best New Attraction in California." The observatory is an educational facility that complements the Rancho Mirage Library, and together, they help achieve our mission of lifelong learning. Our campus has become a true community asset that is free of charge to all. On a more local front, this past Monday, the Anderson Children's Foundation awarded the Rancho Mirage Library and Observatory Foundation a $25,000 grant for our Connecting Children to the Stars Field Trip Program. This grant will allow us to offer all 5th grade Coachella Valley school-aged children, both public and private, a visit to the Rancho Mirage Observatory. In addition to this grant, staff is also working with many other community partners to schedule tours and other programming opportunities. The observatory is a research-grade facility with a core component being public outreach. Whether you're young or younger at heart, a novice, or an expert in astronomy, our observatory is a conduit to lifelong learning. Up on the screen, you will see four images that our Planway CDK 700 telescope has taken over the last four weeks. I'm sorry, the last few weeks. On the top left, you will see M104, also known as the Sombrero Galaxy. It is 29.35 million light-years away. This image was taken on May 4th with a 30-second exposure. For those of you that can see it, there is a white line in the image. That white line is actually a plane that went through our image as the exposure took place. So, the top right is M100. It is a spiral galaxy that is approximately 55 million light-years away. That is the furthest image that we have been able to take at this time. The image was taken on April 19th with a 300-second exposure. On the bottom left, M13 is a great globular cluster in the Hercules constellation, and it is a mere 22,180,000 light-years away. This photo was taken on May 4th with a 30-second exposure as well. On the bottom right, M51, also known as the Whirlpool Galaxy, is over 23.16 million light-years away. This image was taken on April 10th with a 300-second exposure. It is important to remember that these images have been taken with a camera with a 30- to 300-second exposure to allow the telescope to collect more light. What you see here is not what you will see when viewing through the telescope at a stargazing event. Have you ever heard the saying, "Don't look at the sun, or you'll hurt your eyes"? Well, that is a true statement. However, the observatory will soon have a solar telescope that will indeed allow us to look at the sun. We will be able to track the sun throughout the day, look at solar flares, and even see the sun's gas movement. Up on the screen, you will see a picture of the telescope we have purchased with two images of another telescope, exactly the same one, in which they have taken. We have several events and programs currently planned to allow the community access to the facility. Observatory tours are held on a daily basis, Monday through Friday, at 10:00 and 5:00 PM. During these tours, guests will learn about the facility, why it was built, the materials used during construction, and the intended use of the cosmic office, and even get to head into the observatory where the dome, where the Planway CDK 700 telescope resides. Our stargazing events are held as frequently as possible during the time span of one month, given when the sky is the darkest. Tours on the observation deck, I'm sorry, tours will begin on the observation deck. We tour the constellations of the night sky. We utilize portable telescopes to view and discuss some objects. Occasionally, the International Space Station and other prominent satellites will fly overhead, allowing us to see the way things move in space on a smaller scale. Finally, the main portion of the stargazing events, we take guests up into the dome to view with their own eyes a variety of objects ranging from nearby planets to galaxies over 50 million light-years away. Because of the motions of the Earth and other planets, our content changes continuously over time. Our astronomy-related programming has covered a variety of different subjects in a variety of ways. In fact, this Tuesday, we just explored one of the most common questions we address in astronomy. How far away are the stars? Because this is a question of interstellar depth perception, we explored this subject in full red-blue 3D imaging. This literally added a new dimension to the presentation, and opened a new avenue for understanding this complex question. This set of interesting and innovative programming is what we intend to do throughout the summer, fall, and onward. Along with these talks, we will also be showing relevant films and documentaries, as well as inviting special guests to give more perspectives on astronomy and space science. As Charlie mentioned previously, Rancho Mirage resident Roy Liebowitz was kind enough to take some pictures at a recent stargazing event, and it turned it into a quick show. If you can just take a moment? I would like to thank Mr. Liebowitz for putting that together for us. I'd also like to thank city council, Isaiah Hagerman, our city and library staff, for all the amazing work that is being put into this educational facility for the Coachella Valley residents and visitors. We hope to see you at the observatory soon to participate in our programs, our events, and activities. Come join us as we harvest our light and convert it to knowledge. I thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Erin, great presentation. I think we are all overwhelmed with the reception that the community has given our observatory. It's just been unbelievable, the number of people that have wanted to come and see the facility, and then we'll be seeing it over the next few months. So, you guys have surpassed, I think, all expectations and done a great job.
Thank you.
And a great, great individual to head up the program too, in Eric, so...
Yes.
Congratulations. I think we've got really one of the best.
Thank you so much.
Yes, and you also have the grants too, to bring those kids, and that's wonderful.
Absolutely. The 5th grade students, we're looking at close to about 5,000 students for the Coachella Valley.
Isaiah?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, Erin, please give our appreciation to your staff, and Eric, it was unfortunate that he was out sick today. He's been running since day one, and you guys have been doing a fantastic job. For the council, from a city staff standpoint, we've really never seen anything like the amount of interest the observatory has generated, not just for the Coachella Valley, but much broader than that. The example of the MSN story, that was completely unsolicited. So, the city did not seek that out. They found us, and it wasn't until we saw the article that we knew that it existed. So, this thing has been a lightning rod of attention. We're doing, partnering with multiple agencies, with our local schools, key stakeholders in the community, COD, with our resort partners. I mean, this thing is just, we saw it on the opening day. We had somewhere around 1,000 people show up, and we've never had a grand opening like that, and it just hasn't stopped. Our stargazing events, our 500 spots are filling up in a matter of hours, and there's daily tours, and we've trained our staff to give those tours. daily tours, and we've trained our staff to give those tours. We now have a good base of volunteers to help with that process. But from a programming standpoint and from a library standpoint, it is absolutely a remarkable education facility that, like the rest of our incredible library, is free and open up to this community for everybody to enjoy. So, the commitments that the council made to the community when they embarked on that project have definitely been fulfilled and are being fulfilled, and are even surpassing our very high expectations of what that facility could be. So, congratulations to the city council. The observatory is a fantastic addition to the city.
Just one last comment. The mayor's monthly letter, which went out three or four days ago on an e-blast, was devoted to the observatory and how successful it is. So if people want to see it, they can go on the website, or if you're not on the website, you should really get on because we really have some great information that comes out during the month. So, good job, really.
Yes, very good.
Okay, we'll now move on to the public hearings, and the first one is the Consolidated Landscaping and Lighting Maintenance District Number 87-01. And Jesse Eckenrath, our Public Works Director, will do the presentation. Jesse?
Thank you, Mayor. City Council. I'll give you some background on these districts, and then we'll go into the adjustments that are being proposed for this year. In 1987, the city formed its first lighting and landscape district. In 1995 and '96, the city consolidated the multiple districts into Landscape and Lighting District 8701. And currently, the city has five special benefit zones and one citywide median zone within District 8701. The district maintains landscape and lighting in each specific zone. The zones within the district are assessed on a cost-recovery basis, assessing parcel owners for the associated maintenance of their specific zone. The city landscape and lighting zone, which covers city medians, is assessed to parcel owners citywide. And the five special benefit zones within the district are assessed only to parcels receiving the direct and special benefit as determined by the original agreement between the developer and the city. To determine whether assessments need to be revised, the city contracts with Willband Financial Services to prepare an engineer's annual levy report. The engineer's annual levy report factors the revenues and expenses associated with each zone and provides a cost-recovery estimate for each zone. The engineer's report is recommending the following. Jason, if you'd go ahead and bring the slide up. The citywide median, which is citywide, is not this slide, but that's going to remain unchanged. So, for all our city medians, it's $26.42. There's no adjustment being made to that. Zone A, which is up on your slide, is 40 parcels, and there's a slight increase from $244 a year to $252 a year for this zone. The next slide, Zone B, is 14 parcels, and this zone is going to remain unchanged, so a $421 annual charge to this zone, so there's going to be no adjustment there. Zone C, the next slide, please, Jason, is 76 parcels, and there's a slight increase from $72.78 to $77.58 for this zone here. Zone D is going to actually decrease from $373.26 to $365.12. And then the last zone is Zone F, and there's a slight increase from $404.94 to $425.70. Thank you, Jason. Again, the recommendations in the engineer's report are based on cost recovery and constitute only minor adjustments. As required, a public hearing notice has been posted in the local newspaper, noticing today's meeting, and staff recommends that the city council open the public hearing, invite testimony, and consider any protests regarding the Consolidated Landscape and Lighting District 8701. Staff recommends that the city council adopt both resolutions attached to the staff report and direct the city clerk to file certified copies of the resolutions with the appropriate agencies. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now open the public hearing. And is there anybody who would like to file testimony on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and go to the council. Any questions from council? No questions down there?
What was the magic of Zone D getting a decrease while everybody else except one was increased?
You know, they're very minor adjustments, so we estimate this on our costs throughout the year. And if we have no unanticipated events that happen during the zone, you're talking about a few dollars. So, in Zone D, we're not going to collect a reserve. I believe in Zone D, we're not going to collect a reserve, so we feel that we have sufficient funds in that zone, so there's no need for any type of reserve collection. So, they're minor adjustments. We try to be as accurate as possible, but when we go ahead and do this, like right now, it's estimated in our next year's expenses. So, they might come in a little higher or a little lower, and we'll adjust every year based on that.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Can we have a motion, please, and we can include all three items in one motion?
I'll make a motion, then, that whereas the city council and the city of Ranch Mirage, California, as by previous resolution, initiated proceedings and declared is intention to levy assessments and order the preparation of the engineer's annual levy report, heretofore referred to as the report that describes the assessments against parcels of land with Ranch Mirage Consolidated Landscaping and Lighting Maintenance Assessment District Number 87-01, hereafter referred to as the district for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2018, and ending June 30, 2019 pursuant to the provisions of the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972, Part II of Division 15 of the California Streets and Highway Code commencing with Section 22500, hereafter referred to as Act N.
Continue, Dan. Continue this whole thing, huh?
No, I think we can do this short. Just these three.
All right.
Just the three. I'll hand it to you.
Take it from there.
Thank you, Charlie.
All right, hang on a second. All right. Now, the city council will take the following actions at the conclusion of the public hearing. A, adopt a resolution number 2018, next in order, approving the final engineer's annual levy report for the Consolidated Landscaping and Lighting Maintenance Assessment District Number 87-01 for fiscal year 2018-19. B, adopt resolution number 2018, next in order, ordering the levy and collection of assessments within the Ranch Mirage Consolidated Landscaping and Lighting Maintenance Assessment District Number 87-01 for fiscal year 2018-19. And C, direct the city clerk to file with the appropriate agencies certified copies of the above resolutions as may be required, together with accompanying exhibits, attachments, and reports.
I'll second the motion.
Charlie, good job.
Thank you. Didn't know which one to read.
There is a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much. Well, now move on to item number 10, which is solid waste recyclable collection and disposal charges for fiscal year 2018, 2019. This will be discussed by Britt Wilson, our management analyst, and Isaiah Hegerman, our city manager. Isaiah?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item is our standard annual review of our trash rates with Burttec. Representatives from Burttec are in the audience today, and according to our contract, the terms of these increases are based off costs of providing the service to our community. For the representatives of Burttec, thank you very much for all the information that you supply during this process and for the outstanding service that you provide to our community. So, Britt, will you please continue with the staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Hegerman. Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and Council. As Mr. Hegerman pointed out, annually, the city council will set solid waste and recyclable rates for the collection and disposal in the city of Ranch Mirage. This is done by virtue of our contract with Burttec that allows, and it's based on three components for the rates. There's a collection fee, a disposal fee, and there's a reconciliation of the amounts charged. The contract with Burttec allows them to request an annual increase based on a change in the Consumer Price Index. The CPI used for Burttec's contract has increased 3.61%. Therefore, Burttec, in accordance with the contract, they are asking for a 3.61% increase or 52 cents per month for the collection component of the trash fee. In addition to that 52 cents, there's also an AB 939 fee, which is the recycling fee associated with Assembly Bill 939. That helps pay for our recycling programs the city conducts, and also the recycling coordinator that is spelled out in the contract. Those two items, when they're added to the CPI increase of 52 cents, add up to $1.31 per month to the residential rate, as shown in Table 1 on page 1 of your staff report. The disposal fee component is directly tied to what Riverside County charges Burttec when they dispose of their solid waste at county landfills. That fee is referred to as the tipping fee, and the county is increasing it from the current $45.96 per ton to $47.55 per ton, and that will break down into a 19% per month increase for the disposal charge. So adding the increase for the collection component and the disposal component, the new residential rates will be $18.81 versus the current month, current year, which is $17.31. So, rates will be going up $1.50 per month for our residents. There's a quick comparison. Indian Wells pays approximately $21 per month for the same service, and Palm Desert approximately $24 per month. Commercial rates are also comprised of a collection and a disposal component, and they are also subject to the CPI increase. A lot of those rates are attached as exhibit, as an exhibit to the resolution. The standard commercial bin, they use a three-yard bin, collected once per week. Currently, that's $111.94 per month under the CPI increase. This will go to $115.87 per month, approximately $4 a month increase for that. This is applicable under Proposition 218, Right to Vote on Taxes Act, and we are in compliance with that when we did our noticing back in 2014. It was a five-year notice. So the resolution is attached to the staff report, and I will turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor, and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Britt. Any questions from the council? Questions down there?
What factors constitute the difference in the rates between the cities?
The rates between the cities, it's a little bit difficult because they have different programs down there. This is sort of a rough estimation of what they have. It's still the same. It's once per week. Indian Wells has, they include household hazardous waste, but we have free household hazardous waste for our residents. So, it's kind of hard to compare them absolutely on a level field.
The main driver is, a component of our contract is based off CPI. So if other cities started with higher fees, when you apply that CPI increase on a higher fee, that's going to result in more of an increase on the disposal side. The city put in some protections for our community that guaranteed access to certain facilities that maybe other communities didn't. That helped keep our costs a little bit lower. So, essentially, when you compare kind of with the Cove communities at what the proposed new rate is going to be, $18.81 for that twice-a-week walk-in service. When you look at the other two communities, Indian Wells is about $21.12 for that, and it's once a week, and Palm Desert is at $24.48 at once a week. So, we're cheaper with our twice a week.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Dana?
I was going to say, I'd make the motion if we don't have any more questions. I was going to say, I'd also point out that you and I served as the subcommittee on this with our staff and went over these numbers in great detail and came away with the conclusion that our rate increase was fully justified and that it would not be proper for us not to increase the fee slightly. And as Isaiah points out, we're significantly less than Indian Wells or Palm Desert. I'm not sure if it's our negotiating skills or something else, but...
It's got to be.
We're glad for that difference. At any rate, Mr. Mayor, I would move that the city...
Dana, let me open the public hearing first, okay?
Oh, I thought you already had.
Oh, I had that. So we'll open the public hearing on this item. Is there anybody who would like to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll come back to council for a motion. Dana?
I move that the city council adopt resolution number 2018, next in order, establishing solid waste and recycling collection and disposal rates for all classes of customers within the city of Ranch Mirage, effective July 1, 2018. I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to item number 11, which is the Development Agreement, case number DA 180001, being presented by Jeremy Kleim, our Development Services Director.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Put that presentation up. Thank you. So, for your consideration is Development Agreement Case Number DA 180001. I'd like to start by thanking our city attorney and his team for the work they put in on this. It was a bit of a grind to get this thing done, but I think the results were excellent. The subject property for which the development agreement is being considered is located at the southwest corner of Highway 111 and Indian Trail Road. The site consists of eight contiguous parcels, which total just over four acres in size. The project site lies in Land Use District 5 of the Highway 111 East Pacific Plan, and it currently houses four structures. So in brief, a development agreement is a contract between the city and an applicant which outlines development rights, fees, and other requirements that ultimately shape a project's entitlement and development. The purpose of this development agreement is to establish certain development timelines and use restrictions to allow the applicant to develop a Ferrari automobile dealership. A big part of the proposed development agreement is a phasing plan, and so I'd like to just briefly go through that with you. So Phase 1 includes the merger of four parcels, and you can see those parcels on your screen now. There are two buildings that are basically overlay those four parcels, which constitute a non-conforming site condition because buildings aren't supposed to cross property lines. So in merging those four parcels, we'd actually be able to remedy that existing nonconformity. So that's part of Phase 1. Also included in Phase 1 is the repainting of all four buildings, site-wide landscape upgrades, and provisions for the temporary reuse of those buildings. Phase 2 begins with the submittal of a preliminary development plan, or a PDP, which will describe in detail the redevelopment of the site. So once entitlements are granted through that PDP process, Phase 2, what you'll see out there is the demolition of Buildings C and D. You will see the construction of a new service facility. And the last part of Phase 2 will be the construction of a new vehicle showroom. So that's Phase 2. Phase 2 is anticipated to start in June of next year, and will take about two years to complete, or a year and a half to complete. The third and final phase will include the demolition of Buildings A and B, which would be the last two remaining buildings on the site, and that will make way for the construction of the last building that is proposed with this project, which is another showroom. The anticipated completion date for the entire redevelopment of the property is January 1, 2022. It's important to note that the images that you're seeing on your slides are conceptual in nature. This is their plan right now, but as far as the details with regard to the specific locations, heights, the architectural styling of the buildings, you're not considering that today. You're just considering the framework for us to review that in the future. So you'll receive subsequent applications for a preliminary development plan, which will detail those things, and that will come before you probably towards the end of next This is the last slide of my presentation. This is for information only, but the... This is for information only, but the planning staff did receive a minor modification permit application for the temporary reuse and refurbishment of the existing buildings. They will be reused while the applicant develops plans for the ultimate redevelopment of the site. And basically, that application includes some color changes, some branding, and some landscape improvements for the site. So that concludes my presentation, but before offering the Planning Commission's recommendation, I did want to identify one cleanup item in the proposed ordinance on page 11-14, which is the first page of the proposed ordinance. The sixth whereas specifies a development period of, or a timeframe of, two and a half years. That should be three and a half years. The body of the ordinance and the development agreement itself specifies a three-and-a-half-year timeline, so I just wanted to make sure we clean that out before the second reading. So with that, based upon the content findings in the staff report, with the revision that staff has just mentioned, the Planning Commission did recommend that the City Council approve (a) the filing of a categorical exemption of environmental impact pursuant to Section 15301 of CEQA for existing facilities, and (b) the adoption of ordinance next in order approving the development agreement, case number DA 180001 pursuant to Chapter 17.56 of the Rancho Mirage Municipal Code. Again, thank you for your time, and I would be happy to answer your questions.
Thank you, Jeremy. Dana, do you have a question?
I do. Jesse, or Jeremy, is it? Jeremy. The name of the organization is FM 111 LLC. I know from what you've got in the report that a fellow by the name of Jay Wilson is a co-owner of this development and this project. Can you tell us a little bit about the company, what their background is, and what they've done in the automobile industry?
The LLC is a collection of multiple dealerships, and so they're very well capitalized, and they specialize in Ferrari and high-end development. They actually control all of the Ferrari dealerships on the West Coast and the Western U.S., so well capitalized, and they've been doing it a long time.
Thank you.
Jeremy, I have a question. What happens, maybe silly, but what happens if they go a year and a half?
Charlie, could you get closer to your mic?
I'm sorry. What happens if in a year and a half, they come back and say, "Well, it's not doing what we thought it would, and we're not going to build C and D," or whatever? Is a contract like this forcing them to full completion, or is there wiggle room in anything like this?
Yeah, that's a good question. We put some provisions in the development agreement to, I don't want to call them penalties, but to ensure that we get some things that are necessary. For instance, we're not requiring them to hook up to sewer the existing buildings because they're going to be demolished anyways. But for instance, if they don't move forward with demolishing and creating new buildings, they'll have to connect a sewer. The parcel mergers are part of that, so we can clean up some non-conforming site conditions. So there are some things that we'll get out of it if they don't intend to build, or they don't, or they do intend to build, but if they don't follow through with that.
Thank you.
So are you saying that if they decide to, they can stop further development at any time and pull out of the building?
Well, the development agreement specifies the framework for us to review the project. So yeah, again, if they don't end up submitting applications, there are some penalties written into the development agreement, but in that same vein, there are things that we'll ultimately get whether or not they build or not.
Thank you.
Yeah, they're required in the development agreement to, you know, conduct Ferrari dealership activities there or some comparable dealership, as long as it's commercially feasible in the Coachella Valley. But yes, we have buildings removed. There's not, never going to be any parking on Sahara Road, which is going to be in perpetuity, and we have some non-conforming lots that are going to be merged.
Okay. Any questions at this end? Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak on this matter?
I would like to add just one point that we didn't discuss. For the residents of Agony's Falls, one of the provisions of this contract is, I'll quote it, "For safety purposes, developer covenants and agrees that any and all loading and unloading of vehicles shall occur only on the subject property, and at no time shall any public roads, including without limitation Sahara Road, be used for such purposes." I think that's an important thing for residents of there.
Yeah, I think that's very important, and it also states that they cannot have parking on Sahara either, so no unloading, but no parking also. Okay. Can I have a motion, please?
I will make a motion that the City Council (a) approve the filings of a continuously exemption of environmental impact pursuant to Sections 15301 of CEQA for existing facilities, and (b) adopt ordinance number next in order approving Development Agreement, case number DA 180001 pursuant to Chapter 17-56 of the Rancho Mirage Municipal Code.
Second. Okay, there's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, Christie.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to point out one thing.
Yes.
There's a $5,000 fine if they do load or unload on Sahara Road.
Is that 5,000 per occurrence?
Per violation. Correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll now move on to the action portion of the calendar, and the first item is item number 12, Resolution Regarding Third Amendment and Restatement of SEVAG Joint Powers Agreement. And Isaiah, are you going to handle this?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, the item before you today is the Third Amendment and Restatement of the SEVAG Joint Powers Agreement. The Joint Powers Agreement is the agreement of all the members of SEVAG that govern the rules of that organization, that JPA. So the amendment, or the JPA has been amended a couple times through the history of SEVAG. With this specific amendment that you're considering today, it went through a rather lengthy review process by the SEVAG member jurisdictions. There were several different proposals considered throughout that process, and when it was first released, there was some concern amongst some of the SEVAG member jurisdictions about what authority was being gained by SEVAG over the cities with this amendment, and really where we landed at the end of this process and what you are considering today is through that public process, a lot of those harmful provisions were removed from the agreement and more to the structure of how we operated before. So an example of that was in the original release, there was eminent domain authority over the members, so essentially, SEVAG could exercise eminent domain over a city's objections. Currently, under the TUMF implementation agreement, there are protections against eminent domain, so a city council can veto eminent domain within its jurisdictional boundaries. So that was one of the changes that was made through this public process. There were several other provisions that were removed, and on page 12-50 of your staff report is the letter that was issued by the City of Indian Wells outlining four major concerns and the proposed fixes for those concerns. These concerns match the concerns of the City of Rancho Mirage through this public process, and I am happy to report that, thanks to our good friends over at Indian Wells, that all four of these items were addressed and fixed and are considered satisfactory to the city at this point. So when this amendment went forward for approval at the SEVAG level, it was the Executive Committee recommending to each individual member to approve this agreement. So basically, after they made the amendments that are outlined on 12-50, that were made by the City of Indian Wells, it brought in the protections back to the member agencies. Our SEVAG representative at the Executive Committee on April 30th did approve this item, and again, the great thing that this amendment does is it formally recognizes the tribe as a full-blown member under the JPA. So at this point, staff and the city attorney have reviewed this amendment and are recommending approval to the City Council. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. City Attorney, you have any comments on this item?
No, I don't, but if you have questions, I can probably answer them.
Dana, you've been involved in this.
I have a couple of questions. I guess our attorney or anybody else has got the answers to it. If we assume, and I'm not sure that we do assume, but when I say "we," I mean more than just I being among those who will make this assumption. In the agreement of 1989, which is where SEVAG got authority for eminent, I think we're talking about, let me just double-check it. Yeah, the power of eminent domain. As I read the current agreement, it only takes a majority vote to implement the, any resolution to take property by eminent domain. Yet in the original receipt of that power, which was in the 1989 TUMF document, it took a resolution of necessity. It says may be adopted by a two-thirds vote of the Executive Committee. My question is, what are we operating under if we pass this? What are we approving? A two-thirds vote for eminent domain exercise or a simple majority? The way I read the document now, it's just a simple majority. Is that what we...
That's correct. So prior, currently, since this has not taken effect yet, the only eminent domain authority that SEVAG has is through its TUMF implementation agreement. Because it's only located there, their eminent domain authority would only extend to basically transportation projects. And in that implementation agreement, it requires a two-thirds vote, and it's subject to veto by the jurisdiction that may be impacted by the eminent domain action. What is being proposed, because currently in the 1989 agreement, we do not have, there's no reference to eminent domain. They're adding eminent domain into the agreement now, and that's going to be subject to, based on where I read it, it's a simple majority vote to initiate an eminent domain action, but it's subject to veto by the jurisdiction that may be impacted by that action.
Hang on just one second. When you say the document of 1970, or 1989, or so, you say it doesn't require a majority...
No, that's TUMF. That's a TUMF implementation agreement.
Well, the power of eminent domain is part of this...
The TUMF.
Of this implementation agreement.
Correct. Correct, but it's not currently in the SEVAG-JPA agreement.
Okay.
So the implementation agreement is kind of like a side agreement.
And so it won't go, it'll continue then to be a majority vote?
It's actually, it's being extended to general purposes. So now SEVAG can actually commence an eminent domain action beyond transportation purposes, homeless shelter. They have the ability to do that by, they can commence that action by a simple majority vote, but if that homeless shelter is going to be located in a particular jurisdiction that's opposed to it, they have veto authority. So they could not commence that eminent domain action in a jurisdiction that basically does not want that facility.
And each city continues to have the authority and power to prevent the exercise of eminent domain within the city if SEVAG attempted to conduct eminent domain in the city.
That's correct.
Yeah, and just to make sure that's clear, is that implementation agreement that you were reading from still stands. That's for transportation-related eminent domain, two-thirds veto authority. The JPA agreement was silent, and so we carried the same, or SEVAG carried the same protection for eminent domain in all areas of SEVAG, not just transportation-related items, with the veto authority to the city councils.
On page 2, in the fourth paragraph down, under implementation agreements, it says, "Currently, SEVAG is required to adopt an implementation agreement by at least six public agencies, or at least two executive committee members, before SEVAG may enter into such contracts." I don't quite follow that. Is that...
Yeah, basically, that's currently the rule. What's being proposed now is that basically any two members can enter into an implementation agreement, but it's not going to be binding on any member who is not a party to that implementation agreement.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Any questions down here? Ted?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to point out that on the staff report, SEVAG staff report of April 30...
What page is that?
Pardon me?
What page is that?
This is on 12-point, 12-6. That, it's mentioned here that SEVAG staff had previously recommended a 90-day clause to approve the restated JPA. It was a little more onerous than that. It was more than just 90 days to approve it. There was a penalty attached, which was the, frankly, the umbrage that we and several other cities objected to, that not only was it the approval within 90 days, but the expulsion of any city that did not approve it, which would have had a negative impact, of course, upon our receipt of measure A funds. So I think the fact that that has been removed was significant, and merely a recommendation alone is sort of a misnomer here. The penalty phase has been removed, and it's now back to where it should be.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, come back to the council. Any questions or a motion, please?
Hang on just one second. I just want to make sure that I've covered everything that I wanted to cover. Okay, thank you.
And if, I'm sorry, just quickly, I think one of the things that during this process we kind of zoned in on is on page 12-77.
12-what?
77. There's a recital D on that page, and essentially, to summarize, recital D simply states that there's nothing in SEVAG's power that can compel any of its members to do any activities or implement any plans or strategies that they do not wish to undertake. And I think when you look back at the history of what this city does before we participate in a project, as we go through a thoughtful analysis before we participate in something, and if we can do it better and provide a better service and be more responsive to our community by not joining that project, that's when you've seen us as an organization not join a regional project. It's after we've analyzed it and we've determined that it's not in our community's best interest to join a project. So we still have full authority to... So, we still have full authority to determine what is and what is not in the best interest of our community, and what we participate in and what we don't participate in.
Thank you. So, essentially, we have full veto authority over anything that we do not feel is in our best interest.
Correct. There's, there's nothing that forces us to participate in a SEVAG project.
Okay. All right, just go with the resolution here. Anybody who want to make the motion, please?
Dana, would you? Do you want to make it? All right, I'll make it. I would make it that the city council adopt a resolution number 2018, next in order, approving the Third Amendment and restatement to SEVAG joint power agreements, and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement on behalf of the city.
Is there a second, please? Please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to item number thirteen, which is the annual levy, levy of the special tax and assessment for fire protection and prevention and community facilities, District Number One and Two. And Britt Wilson, our management analyst, will discuss this. Britt?
Good afternoon again, Mayor and Honorable Council. On an annual basis, various assessments and special taxes must be confirmed by the city council and then submitted to Riverside County for inclusion on the subject property owner's tax bills. The three resolutions attached to your staff report would approve assessments for special taxes that fund public safety, i.e., police and fire, and library services comprised of the fire tax, the fire excise tax, and community facilities districts numbers one and two. The fire and fire excise tax are $60 per dwelling unit and $13.66 per dwelling unit, respectively. Due to Proposition 218 restrictions, those fees have never changed since they were adopted, so they will remain the same as they have for a number of years. The community facilities district number one, which again is police and fire, that is determined to cover public safety service, and it's, uses a mathematical formula that was established by the enabling ordinance, ordinance number 485. That formula looks at the expenses, the actual expenses for public safety, and then the revenue generated for public safety, and comes up with a net cost, and then that's apportioned out among the various parcels. The fiscal year 2018-2019 special tax for residential dwelling unit is proposed to be levied at $373.53. It's actually a decrease of nearly $14 from the current fiscal year. And the commercial square footage, which is based on a square footage basis rather than a unit basis, it is 66 cents per square foot, which is a decrease of 2 cents from the current fiscal year. The community facilities district number two, which is the Western Vacation Club, that was established in 2001, and it's used to fund library services. The special tax there is subject to an annual increase that reflects the change in the Consumer Price Index, which, as you may recall from the BRTC staff report just presented, is 3.61%. So, therefore, the rates for CFD II will increase from the current $35.32 per assessable week to $36.59 per assessable week. The attachments are the resolutions that would enable this to be approved and then forwarded on to our tax consultant, Will Dan, who's here in the audience, and then be put, put on the tax rolls for next year. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Britt. Is there some reason that the commercial development went down from 68 cents to 66?
It's based, the formula, what it does, it looks at, it looks at revenue and expenses, and so, that can impact it. Also, the allocation of calls. So, what we do is we, we have the Sheriff's Department, they'll tell us how many calls went to commercial versus residential. The Fire Department will look at the total number of fires in the city, and those are broken down, commercial versus residential. So, like last year, I think we had eight residential fires and two commercial. This year, we had 10 residential and one commercial. So, it changes on a yearly basis. Sometimes it can go up, sometimes it can go down.
Okay, thank you. Any questions down here? No?
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question.
Okay.
On page thirteen dash two, the summary of assessments and special taxes. There are two taxes there for the fire. They both have the same meaning and purpose, apparently. Could you explain the difference between a regular fire tax and a fire excise tax?
The, the original fire tax was, was passed for fire prevention and protection and paramedics for the city. At the time, there was no inflator of any sort in there to, to increase that on an annual basis, so the city decided to adopt a fire excise tax. So, additional tax to, to cover the inflationary cost. Unfortunately, that tax was, again, was limited by Proposition 218. We've not increased it. So, the first tax was just the original tax. The fire excise tax was to bring in additional monies to support the increased cost, but it's been frozen since that time.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Anybody in the audience have a question regarding this item? Seeing none, we'll come back for a motion. Can we have a motion, please?
Make a motion that the city council adopt resolution 2018, next in order, ordering the levy and collection of the City of Rancho Mirage fire tax and fire excise tax pursuant to city ordinance numbers 190 and 475 for fiscal year 2018 slash 19, and B, adopt resolution 2018, next in order, establishing and ordering the levy and collection of the annual special tax pursuant to order number, ordinance number 485 for community facilities, District One, which is police and fire services, and annexations thereto for fiscal year 2018 slash 2019, and C, adopt resolution number 2018, next in order, establishing and ordering the levy and collection of the annual special tax pursuant to ordinance number 767 for community facilities, District Two, which is the Western Vacation Club, and annexations thereto for fiscal year 2018 slash 19.
Second. Thank you. There's a motion and a second, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Now, move on to item number fourteen, which is park maintenance district special tax levy for fiscal year 2018, 2019. And Jesse, this is yours.
Yes, Mayor, council members. This is the tax that funds the maintenance of our parks and keeps them looking very beautiful. In 1998, Rancho Mirage residents approved a special park tax to fund the maintenance of Rancho Mirage city parks, and the park tax was approved for an original levy of $18.96, and it did allow for annual adjustments limited to CPI to keep pace with maintenance costs. The park tax is levied equally to each residential dwelling unit within the city regardless of value. Commercial, recreational, and undeveloped land is levied according to an equivalent dwelling unit calculation as shown on page one of the resolution. The county levies the roll and collects the park tax on behalf of the city. The, the city receives park tax revenue from the county and records the revenues in the Parkland Fund, which is used exclusively for city parks. The park tax for the current fiscal year is $29.76 per residential uni, uh, unit, and as approved by the voters, the park tax can be adjusted annually according to CPI. The change in CPI from calendar year 2016 to 2017 is 2.8%, and staff is recommending that the city council adjust the park tax by CPI of 2.8%. A 2.8% increase in the park tax will adjust the per residential dwelling unit tax from $29.76 to $30.60, an 84-cent difference. On June 2018, the Parkland Fund is estimated to have a balance of 1 million, slightly down from the June 2017 balance of 1.1 million. And for fiscal year 1718, the Parkland Fund is budgeted to have a minimal surplus. Staff is recommending that the city council approve the attached resolution to adjust the 2018-19 park tax based on CPI increase, and direct the city clerk to submit the appropriate forms with the county. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much. Is there any questions? Questions down here? No? Is there anybody in the audience who really needs to know all about their park fees? Okay, seeing none, go back to the council for a motion, please.
I will make a motion that the city council, A, adopt resolution number 2018, next in order, ordering the levy and collection of park maintenance special tax pursuant to ordinance number 685 for fiscal year 2018, 2019, and B, direct the city clerk to file certificate copies of the above resolution and accompanying exhibits, attachments, and reports with the appropriate agency as required.
Thank you, very good. Is there a second? Second, okay. All in favor, please vote.
Councilmember Townsend, would you enter your vote, please?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Motion carries five zero.
Okay, thank you. We'll now move on to the next item, which is item number sixteen, and this has to do with certificates of compliance for the fiscal year 2018, 2019 tax roll. And Jesse, you're back on this item.
Thank you. Another exciting one. Mayor and city council, the County of Riverside administers a collection of taxes and assessments on behalf of the City of Rancho Mirage. The city makes adjustments to taxes and assessments within the city on an annual basis. The adjustments made by the city to taxes and assessments are submitted to the county for inclusion on the tax roll. The city submits a certificate of compliance to the county, listing the districts and funds that the city maintains. The certificate of compliance serves as a mechanism to formally establish compliance with Proposition 218. Staff recommends that the city council authorize the city manager or his designee to execute and submit to the county a certificate of compliance with Proposition 218. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Any questions, council? Anybody in the audience would like to know more about this item? Okay, can we move on and have a motion, please?
Sure, I'll make the motion that the city council authorize the city manager or his designee to execute the necessary certificates of compliance and/or other documents as may be required for each fixed charge, charged district to be submitted for, for levying and collection on the fiscal year 2018 slash 19 tax roll.
I'll second that.
Is a motion and a second? Please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Mr. Mayor, if I may make a comment, since our Public Works Director seems to be the last several items. I want to commend this past week the Public Works Department on a most unusual situation. During the night, one of the traffic lights was hit by an automobile in the middle of the night, like at 2:30 in the morning. Our Public Works Department immediately responded, and that that traffic light was repaired, and when traffic was resumed in the morning and people went back to work, there was absolutely no telltale signs that an accident had occurred. This is pretty remarkable when we have this kind of response in our city. And I commend the Public Works Department, our director, for responding that quickly. That's quite amazing. You know, we've just gone through a long dialogue regarding the synchronization, synchronization of our streets, and we received some degree of criticism that we did not agree to what joined the SEVAG dictate of going along with all of the other cities regarding the synchronization. And we did that for the purpose that we did not want to lose control, and we did not want to give up our independence because we felt that we could better respond. What occurred this week, I think, illuminates that decision, that indeed, and Jesse and your, your staff are to be commended for the response that occurred. And that's what makes, in my opinion, in our opinion, the City of Rancho Mirage so unique that we respond quickly to make sure that our residents and visitors are never inconvenienced. And so, thanks, a shout-out to you and your, your department for a job well done.
Thank you, council member. I'd also like to point out, you know, under the direction of our city manager, we're going to respond to these, and we're going to respond timely. It's really the guys who are out there, Justin Aruberg, Matt Reynolds, Dave Martin, who are responding to these, and they routinely get called out in the middle of the night, and they are first responders. So, not only do they have the intersection up and running by the morning, but they also save the city money because we don't have to hire contractors to come and do that. We have the talent in-house to do that, so I'll be sure to, to pass along your kind of words to them. Thank you.
You know, on that point, about a week ago, the sign that was holding up, the sign at DeVal and Cobb was on the ground, crumpled, at least broken in, seemed to be broken into pieces. When I left in the morning, that was the condition of it. When I came back late that afternoon, the sign was back up, and it looked like even had to use almost glue or something to put, hold some of it together, but you definitely knew it was back to Cobb and DeVal. And I'm glad you mentioned that concerning the staff and getting that one was up so quickly. And that's one of the reasons, just one of many, why we don't want to delegate our authority to outside agencies. We, anything we can handle, that we can do for the public and do it a whole lot faster, we try to do it, and I think these are two remarkable examples.
Okay, thank you for the comments. Appreciate that. We've got a great staff, and they are the best in the valley. Just remember that. Okay, we'll now move on to item number sixteen, which is the periodic review of development agreements. And Jeremy?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. For your review is a report which provides an update on the various development agreements that are currently active throughout the city. It's important for the city to conduct periodic reviews of these agreements to ensure that the property owners are operating in good faith with the rules and regulations that are outlined in those particular agreements. Happy to report that the seven agreements that you see on your scene, on your screen now, those are all the development agreements that are currently active in the city, and they have all been found to be in good standing. So, I don't have a lot to say. The staff report that accompanied this item provided some background on the purposes of each of these development agreements, but with that, the Planning Commission did recommend that the city council find that the subject developers and/or property owners are currently in compliance with the terms and conditions of their development agreements. That's all I have. I'll be happy to answer your questions. Thank you.
And Jeremy, these need to be approved every year? A second.
Uh, there's no stipulation for the frequency of them. It just, the code states that they should be reviewed periodically.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Anybody in the audience would like to ask an item, ask about this item? Seeing none, can I have a motion, please?
I will make a motion that the city council find that the subject developers and/or property owners are currently in compliance with the terms and conditions of their development agreements.
Second.
There's a motion and a second? Please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay. Before we go on to item number seventeen, I just want to thank all the staff who put together this document. It took four people to carry it in and out of the city hall into my car. You've done a great job. The calculation of all the fees and everything else that went along with this report, I'm sure it took hours and hours to do because it took hours to read, so you guys did a great job, as usual. The Finance Department really is right on top of everything, and we appreciate the time and effort that's put in on putting this information together. So, with that, we'll go on to the last item. That's item number seventeen, and this will be presented by Kristi Ramos, our city clerk. Kristi?
Thank you, Mayor, city council. So, as you all know, annually, following councils- So, as you all know, annually, following council's reorganization, the city council appoints representatives from its members to serve on various outside agency boards, committees, and commissions. Mayor Kite provided a list of suggested appointments, which was included as part of the staff report in your packet. At this time, you may approve the appointments as presented or propose alternative appointments. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments from council? Everybody happy with the appointments?
Well, I would like to make a motion, because there will be a slight change, that this, I'd like to move that the city council confirm the annual appointments of city council representatives to various outside agency boards, committees, and commissions as proposed by the mayor, with the amendment of councilmember Townsend replacing councilmember Smodrich as the primary delegate, and councilmember Smodrich being the alternate to the Cove Communities Services Commission.
I will second that.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to ask about this appointment? Okay, we'll go back to a vote now, and there was a motion and a second by Mr. Townsend, Councilman Townsend. So, if you would please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
And the motion carries five zero. Thank you, Kristy. With that, we'll now go on to the city attorney's report and discuss the closed session coming up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The council is now going to recess in the closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9 regarding three potential initiation of litigation items and the existing case known as Veronica Juarez et al. versus City of Rancho Mirage.
Thank you very much, Steve, and we'll go into recess for a closed session. Thank you all for coming today.